All right, so join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you everyone and welcome to the Board of Alderman meeting. Uh, we're gonna start off with.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Clifford.
If I may, um, before we get started, I'd like to ask that, uh, uh, for a moment of silence to, uh, our Gary Donahue. I know he was a member of this board. Didn't have a chance to serve with him, but I know he was a good man. And, uh, I just wanted to ask that, if we could do that?
Uh, certainly, Alderman Clifford, I think that's more than appropriate. Take a mo- Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, we are on minutes of the previous meeting. Uh, it says November 2nd online, but I'm hoping it says November 16th. Um, but I would, a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
We have a motion approved and Alderman Gillum is seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, alterations to the minutes of previous meeting's agenda? I am seeing none, but all those in favor, would you please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, real quick before we move on to outside the rail, we do have a number of callers on tonight, which is great, but if you are not speaking, would you please, uh, mute your mic on your phone? You get a lot of back. Thank you. Um, so we are on to outside the rail and I believe we have Dave Wallstrom here to speak to a resolution for Dave Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yeah, this is Dave Wallstrom, 18 Highland Avenue. Can you guys hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Great, so I'm coming to the board tonight as a representative of the Rutland City Parks Foundation. Uh, we've been in operation about two years now and we thought it was time to provide you all with an update. Sorry we took so long, Sharon. Um, to start with, one of our, um, goals in the last year was to raise money to help Dave and Tim, our city foresters, raise funds to replace some of the over 200 city shade trees that were removed due to the Emerald Ash Borer. And I think we all know how valuable our shaded walkable streets are. Um, then they are one of the most heavily used recreation spaces in our city and that's why they fell under our kind of umbrella as a nonprofit board. Initially, we had hoped to hold a public event at the community center last June to show off the community center and to raise funds for the Emerald Ash Borer. Unfortunately, that wasn't possible due to COVID-19. So, we have been able to raise over the summer and fall about a thousand dollars in small donations for tree replacement and we would like to present that to the city today, um, before Dave retires in January and we wanted to appreciate, um, all of Dave's work over the last, I think, two decades. Um, that Dave has worked tirelessly to maintain both our watershed and our city streets and we appreciate all the hard work and dedication that has taken and we wanted to say thank you to Dave. We will, um, continue to reach out to folks and help raise trees, they raise money for tree replacement. We dropped off the check yesterday or couple last week at Treasurer Markowski's office and we are still collecting funds for this project. If anybody, um, is willing to help donate to replace community shade trees, please go to our website at Rutland Parks Foundation dot com.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Wallstrom. Uh, and I believe I misspoke, I said resolution when in fact I should say proclamation for Dave Schneider. Uh, Mayor Lair, would you like to read that aloud?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, thank you very much. So, whereas Dave Schneider was appointed as city forester on November 13th, 2000, following the sudden passing of Dave Richards, Rutland's first city forester. And whereas Dave Schneider will retire from that position on January 4th, 2021. And whereas during his 20-year tenure as city forester, Mr. Schneider dramatically expanded the operations of the forestry section, especially in support of the city's urban forest within our public spaces and along our streets. And whereas Dave maintained Rutland's status as the longest continuously recognized, quote, "Tree City USA," unquote, community in Vermont, reaching 28 years this year. And whereas Dave has worked tirelessly with groups like Rutland Blooms to encourage volunteerism in the service of tree stewardship and city beautification. And whereas, in addition to this honor, thanks to Dave's leadership, the city of Rutland was recognized in 2001 as the recipient of the Vermont Tree Steward Award by the Vermont Urban and Community Forest Council. And by the same group in 2015 with the Vermont Town Forest Centennial Award for excellence in stewardship of the Rutland City Forest. And whereas Dave's leadership over the last few years developed and implemented through the Emerald Ash Borer invasion has saved taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars and will save over 100 exceptional examples of ash trees throughout the city. And while controversial at the time, Rutland's response has become a model for urban ash trees at risk throughout Vermont. And whereas, on occasions too numerous to list, Dave Schneider has tirelessly responded during storm events to open blocked roads and remove hazardous trees and limbs from the public right of way. And whereas, while the planting of crab apples and other flowering species along city streets began under Dave Richards, Dave Schneider has realized his predecessor's dream of distinguishing Rutland as the city of flowering trees every spring. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that in recognition of his decades of service to Rutland, that Arbor Day, April 30th, 2021, is hereby designated as Dave Schneider Arbor Day in Rutland, given under my hand and seal of the city of Rutland on the 7th day of December 2020, David W. Lair, Mayor of the city of Rutland. Congratulations.
I, I guess it's my turn to talk. Um, I want to thank everyone.
I believe Dave Schneider is on and he wants to speak.
Well, thank you. Um, I just wanted to thank everyone there for this recognition. Um, this was a team effort. It, it starts from the top and it works its way down and, um, somehow, some way, we get the trees in and people appreciate them and that, that's really the heart of, of the job. So, thank you very much for all of this.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Uh, Alderman Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, um, I just want to say, uh, wish you good luck. I know that, uh, not only are you an outstanding arborist, but your tenure, you're probably one of the most hardworking guys that, uh, that's down at that department. I had the pleasure of serving with you and, um, I just want to say thank you for everything you've done, uh, not only as an arborist, but you were one of those, one of those guys that, uh, you know, whenever you had the call, um, you'd do whatever it took. Uh, you, you came in and you, you did everything else, uh, you know, under the sun that had to be done. So, I just want to say thank you for that and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Alderman Davis.
So, David, I also, uh, just want to say congratulations. Uh, that recognition is certainly well-earned. Um, our city is a more beautiful city because of you and all the hard work that you've done. Um, but you've also been, um, as hard as it can freeze, but you've also been a teacher to a lot of the youth that are out there and, um, so thank you very much and I wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief Lovett, I think I see your hand.
Yes, um, I just wanted to wish Dave, uh, luck. Thank him very much for all the nights that we called him in the middle of the night during a storm and he didn't hesitate to come forward. Uh, you've deserved, uh, your retirement. Enjoy it and, uh, give him your phone, please.
Well, provisions, uh, they have the resources they need. We'll, we'll repit for the budget because I will be here through that process. Um, they, they, uh, they'll get the work done and they'll do the job that people receive. I'll, I'll stop there.
Chief.
And I do thank you so much for your time, time words, thank you.
All right, I, I'm not sure who caller 19 is. I went ahead and muted you. I'm, I'm sorry, I hope work turns out all right. Um, anyone else who wishes to say anything to, uh, Dave Schneider? Uh, Commissioner Wenberg.
Uh, Dave, I, I've already expressed personally and in the office, um, my appreciation and we'll have another opportunity. I think I'm gonna beat you out the door by about three or four days, but, um, we'll have a little bit of time. But, um, I, I want to echo what Paul said in particular, uh, your, um, care that you take, um, for, uh, those, and the stewardship that you've demonstrated, both within the city and in the, in the watershed, uh, has set an exceptionally good example. And I would also say that, in addition to the other things others have mentioned, um, I would just say that you have worked, I think over the last, uh, two, four years? How long has Tim been with us? Um, is he been with us four years at this point? Um, I think it's four years. Um, you've done a marvelous job of preparing, uh, the next city forester, um, Tim, uh, to step into your shoes and to pick up right where you left off, both by your example and by your transfer of your exceptionally large amount of knowledge, um, that quite frankly, uh, would be lost if, uh, you didn't take the time and we didn't have the opportunity to have essentially an apprentice. Um, so the city will continue to be well-served and your legacy will be well-protected, uh, even after your retirement and your efforts and work to make sure that that happened, um, is, uh, part of your legacy as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wenberg. Uh, Alderman DePoy.
So, I want to thank Dave too. He's done yeoman's work in the city forestry and everything and he has taught me a lot about different kinds of trees, the Emerald Ash Borer, the, uh, some kind of a flake or something that's in the red pine, um, scale or something like that. I mean, stuff that we would never know about if it weren't for Dave keeping us up to date on his activities and the transparency that he's provided as far as his duties with the city are concerned. And I think that it's, uh, you know, been a, a real blessing to have him. And, um, Dave, I hope your golf game improves. It definitely needs to and I think it will, uh, as you've had more, have more time next summer to be out on the golf course, so congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Uh, just another quick reminder, if you're not speaking, but you're calling on your phone, please mute your phone, otherwise I have to do it for you. Thank you. Uh, anyone else who wishes to speak to this? All right, well, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor Lair for the proclamation and thank you, Mr. Schneider. Um, so we are still on. Uh, we are still under outside the rail. Do we have any other members of the public here who wish to address the board on, uh, items not on the agenda? Commissioner Wenberg.
Um, I, I think Mayor Lair is frozen. I'm looking at his picture, at least it is on my screen. And, um, I think he, I'm gonna step in here for a moment because I don't know if, um, he's actually available to speak. But the other thing is, um, the proposed joint resolution. Uh, Mr. President, is this a time we'd like to take that up as well?
Um, yeah, I was gonna take that up on our communications from the mayor, but we would have a little moving. But so I think if you want to take it away, go ahead and then hopefully he gets back online with us.
I would prefer to defer to the mayor and hopefully he'll be able to cure that problem. But we'll take it up then, thank you.
Actually, we'll go to a moment. Uh, so is there any other members of the public who wish to address the board on items not on the agenda? I am seeing none.
Yes, uh, yes, this is Jason Bemis and Andrew Burnbaum calling about our buy-up application, um, for 89 Center Street.
Yep, uh, just identify yourself, uh, your residence and then go for it.
So, so that is on the agenda, folks. Andy and Jason, that is, that is on the agenda.
Great.
Uh, yeah, we have the request, so let's, let's hold off, you're coming up a little bit later.
Okay, sure, we wasn't, I wasn't sure how that pers- uh, thank you.
That's perfect, you're coming up. All right, any other members of the public who are on who wish to address the board on items not on the agenda? Hearing nothing. We are moving on to communications from the mayor. I believe Mayor Lair did run into a death of difficulty. I see he has signed off. Hopefully he'll be back with us. So, we can just jump ahead real quick, cover additions to the agenda. I see he's coming back in and we'll come back to it very quickly. Actually, he's back now. Mayor Lair, we're on to you, communications from the mayor. You're muted right now. We're still not hearing you.
Okay, how about now? So, uh, okay, very good. So, thank you. Um, I have two things. Uh, one is a, uh, joint resolution of the mayor and the Board of Alderman. Um, we had, uh, received some communication, uh, from our sister city, Hanamaki City. Um, and sent us over a gift and the gift was several of these masks that, um, Commissioner Wenberg has been good enough to pass around to the members of the Board of Alderman. And if I could ask you all to mask up right now with your Hanamaki City received mask, we would appreciate that. And, um, I believe we're going to have someone, and I'm not sure who, Jeff, that is going to snap a picture of all of us, um, members of the Board of Alderman and the mayor and I believe, um, Commissioner Wenberg with their mask on and take a photo of that and we're gonna send it on over to our friends over in Hanamaki City. So, um, Jeff, is there anything you want to add to that?
Nope, um, but, uh, to take up the resolution, once we do this, everybody unfortunately Mayor Lair is frozen, so I'm sure he's gonna, but we can't see it. But let's take a shot right now, because we don't know if that's gonna work again. Okay, and this is being recorded, so hopefully we can pick up the very best image. The plan, of course, is to, um, package this image with official, original copy of the resolution, thanking, uh, folks in the sister city for these masks and, um, basically for their friendship over all these years. Um, and then, uh, you know, just pass that along to them, um, both electronically and, uh, through the mail. So, thank you all, I got that.
Is, is Mayor Lair still with us? I noticed his camera's gone.
Okay, now I'm wondering, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, so I have the resolution I'd like to read right now if I could. Whereas the town in Ishidora, in the city of Hanamaki, Iwate, Japan, in the city of Rutland, Vermont, USA, have enjoyed a successful city-sister relationship for over 34 years. And whereas through the period, the cultural, educational and personal ties between our communities have grown stronger and deeper. Whereas each community has offered support to the other during times of disasters, including earthquakes, floods and terrorist attacks. And whereas the COVID-19 global pandemic has challenged both of our communities and nations at the same time. And whereas the nation of Japan has been a world leader in containing the virus spread and limiting its impact on the most vulnerable citizens. And whereas the state of Vermont has been a national leader in the United States in the same regard. And whereas Hanamaki, in response to this pandemic, has undertaken the strong-in-the-rain mask initiative, producing and donating beautiful face masks to protect us from the virus to remind us that we face this pandemic together. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Alderman and the mayor of the city of Rutland express their thanks to the city of Hanamaki, Japan, and her people for the gift of the strong-in-the-rain masks and for their leadership in demonstrating that if we all strive to be like the person described in Muzawagi Kenji's former famous poem, we will get through the COVID-19 pandemic together, approved by the Board of Alderman in their meeting of December 7th, 2020. Thank you very much.
I'm moved. Second.
All right, um, thank you, Mayor Lair. We have, uh, a motion from seconded to adopt the resolution. Any debate on that? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of adoption of this resolution? Okay, but aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Alderman Gruza?
I'd just like to add that, um, that some 25 years ago when Jeff Wenberg was mayor, um, I think it's about when this program started and Jeff's to be commended that it's kept alive so long with, with or without him, I guess. I don't know, because I haven't really stayed up on it, but, um, I was big in the Lions Club back then, president of the Lions Club and lionism was big in Japan. And Jeff brought a lot of the, uh, people from Ishidoriya back then to the Lions Club meetings and they had lunch, uh, we had several dinners, uh, the city did with them and it was awesome. Those people wanted to like us, they wanted to be with us. Um, they wanted us to go visit them. I never made it to one of the trips, but I know the mayor and several people at the time did. And it's, it's a neat relationship and I commend, uh, at the time Mayor Wenberg for keeping it up and Mayor Lair that's also kept the, the wheels going on this, uh, it's, it's, it's neat. It's really neat and they're, they, like I said, they want us to like them and we like them for that. And, uh, um, it's just neat, it's neat all these years later to, to see it's still going. It's been great for the kids, by the way. It's just been wonderful for the students and I hope, I hope it keeps on going for another 25 or 50 years or so. And just wanted to add that, thank you very much. It's, it, that's a real good thing anyway for Rutland and I thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gruza. Um, Mayor Lair, back to you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, I just had one, uh, well, I guess I have two other things tonight. Um, one is I had sent you a memo earlier today and I apologize for it being, uh, um, lost in the shuffle a little bit with all the other, uh, agenda items. But tonight I'm requesting approval from the board to go out for an RFP. So, the reason for this is that often we receive feedback from city taxpayers and employees about how to improve city services. Um, there hasn't been one single event that has led to this, uh, decision to ask this from, uh, the Board of Alderman. But after discussions, uh, internally with both the, um, Human Resources Department and the city attorney and looking to improve communications with, again, our city employees and, and our unions, uh, we decided it was, um, would be beneficial to go out and explore the costs to have someone come in to facilitate workshops with employees to identify processes that may be improved, uh, across city government, particularly those involve multiple divisions within departments. So, uh, having said that, uh, as with all RFPs, um, a recommendation will be made, uh, internally, uh, within the next, uh, month or so after we receive these RFPs and, um, make a recommendation to you. But of course, the Board of Alderman will have a final decision about whether we should go forward or not. Um, I just believe that it's time, especially with, um, the fact that we're gonna be having at least three new department heads coming on board. Um, the Commissioner of Public Works, uh, our zoning administrator and new city assessor, that we're gonna have some new faces in the, uh, in the building. Um, I think it's a good time to take a re-evaluation, see what we're doing right, see what, what can be improved. And if someone from the outside come in and do it at a reasonable cost, I think it's well worth, uh, exploring. So, what I'm asking for tonight is just authorization to be able to go out and, and get an RFP.
Alderman Humphrey?
Thanks. Um, sorry, hang on. Sorry, I forgot I was on the phone. Um, uh, so, thank you, uh, Mayor Lair. So, I'm, uh, in support of sending this RFP out. I am very curious as to what, um, folks from the outside looking in may, um, pinpoint as some focuses for us to look at for improvement. Um, and so I'm, uh, anxious to see what, uh, suggestions they come up with. The RFP was, uh, fairly broad and I'm sure you intended it that way, but I'm curious, um, when we send RFPs out like this, we typically, I mean, they're available to anyone to, uh, respond to, but we typically have like a shortlist of firms that we reach out to directly. And so I'm just curious if you could tell us, um, what types of consultants or firms you reached out to, uh, with this originally or intend to? Thanks.
Well, um, I think I don't have any particular, um, um, list of, uh, of folks other than, um, some that have some sort of experience dealing with larger groups, uh, larger businesses. You know, we're a, we are a business, uh, we have 160 employees. Um, I want to have somebody that's got some experience dealing with those kind of larger groups and certainly people, um, or, um, uh, businesses that have experience dealing with unions, you know, having four different unions with, um, multiple desires and needs, depending on which group it is. Um, I think that that, just both those things will count quite.
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend and seconded. Um, Alderman Humphrey, did you follow up before we proceeded with that?
Yes, please. So, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, well, I'm not sorry, but I didn't, I, um, are you able to more directly answer my question, Mayor? Do you have anybody in mind or, um, or you don't have that list yet is what you're saying?
Uh, both. I don't have anybody in particular in mind, that's why we're going for the RFP. And, um, I don't have an answer to that, uh, second question.
So, so if we don't have, um, are we just posting this in the paper and on the website and, and anticipating that folks will be kind of on the lookout for these things or?
I think we're gonna go through our usual process when we send out RFPs. Um, I don't do it usually right directly out of my office. It's handled either through the city attorney's office or HR and I'll work in conjunction with those two folks to get this out.
Thank you, Mayor Lair. Uh, I do see their hands, but we have a motion to suspend, seconded. We'll go through that and then once we get a motion out there, we'll, we'll go with it. Uh, so all those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Um, we, because we do have- Because we do have some people voting against this, we do have to take a roll call vote. So let's clerk Heck to initiate that now.
Alderman Russo?
Yes.
Alderman Humphrey?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Ryan?
No.
Alderman Attori?
No.
Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Alderman Mattis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillum?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Yes.
Alderman DePoy?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Eight-two motion.
All right, so it's eight-two in favor of suspending the rules. And now, do we have a motion?
I'll put a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman, for debate. I'll move for the approval of the Request for Proposals for Professional Services to Facilitate Business Process Improvements Workshops.
Second. Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded, so there's some hands. Alderman Attori, I'd like to hear your first.
Thank you. So I'm absolutely appreciative of the desire to make City Hall work better based on feedback, right? That's the way business works. It's absolutely appropriate. And I commend the mayor for going this route. I would prefer to send this committee to committee. I have a couple of questions, and I mean, we can certainly discuss them here, but I feel like a committee discussion would be better. One, I'm curious about kind of where we're thinking the cost would come in and where that's going to come from. But more importantly, when I read the RFP, it looks like it's about facilitating workshops, where the idea is that you've already had what's wrong or what you need to work on, and you're having people then workshop with staff members. If you've done that work about understanding all the different process pieces that need some help, then that makes a lot of sense, but that's the part I'd like to understand more. Otherwise, I'd like to expand the RFP to kind of, you know, have somebody look at City Hall and look at some of the processes, maybe a specific process. Maybe it's building and zoning, you know, that we want to look at. Maybe it's how people work with DPW. There's a number of options there, and I just feel like a committee meeting would allow us to talk about it. I'm certainly supportive of the mayor wanting to do an RFP and would support whatever it is that comes out of there. I think there's just some things that we can do to, you know, perhaps make this have a little bit more sustenance so that we can, you know, get the most of our money. Thank you.
Alderwoman Ryan, I saw your hand before. Suspension, do you so?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Matt. I just want to echo, I think, Alderman Attori in that I have a lot of questions. I did email Dave earlier about this, and I appreciate your email back, Mayor LaRae. Although I do agree with Alderwoman Humphrey, it is vague. I'm wondering what types of workshops, what types of issues that need to be dealt with. It's just not clear. There's been opportunities in the past to have workshops, and I'm just wondering what specific ones you're thinking about and what the goal of those workshops are, who they're for, et cetera. So I do support this going to committee as well.
Thank you, Alderwoman Ryan. Alderwoman Davis?
So I guess I look at this in a little different light than Alderman Attori and Alderman Ryan. I don't look like that there's something wrong. I look at it as an opportunity. So any of us who work with a number of employees that is largely based, there are opportunities to do things better. There are opportunities to communicate better, to do workflow better, to look at processes better. So I think that's the discussion that I had with the mayor, who appeared to be in agreement. So I think this is a positive thing. I think it flows back to the taxpayers. If we work smarter and we work more diligently and we communicate better, then we service the taxpayers better. So I am in full support.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Attorney Blumer, I saw you commented on the chat. You had something to add real quick?
Yeah, I think I can add a little bit, because I helped to draft it. I drafted it a little bit like I had done for the RFPs for outside counsel. So not with, you know, a particular thing in mind per se, but more so to find out, you know, hourly rates and to understand people's experience in this area. You know, so I think that the way it's intended to be responded to is with somebody's experience, having kind of worked on these collaborative processes with, you know, an employee group and what they would charge per hour. And then I would anticipate that, you know, there would be some things that would be identified within the city that we've already received, you know, feedback, whether it be from, you know, the public or from the employees. And that would be probably paid for through, you know, professional development line in, you know, a department's budget or the contingency fund, or we would come back to the board if it were, you know, sort of a more in-depth process to work with it. But the idea was more to kind of have have an idea of who's out there that does this type of work and, you know, what their hourly rate would be. And then kind of, you know, maybe as, you know, Alderman Attori mentioned, identify those things, you know, probably at, you know, department by department. Just, I think, a little bit extra information about how I was envisioning it as I, you know, was writing it.
Thank you, Attorney Blumer. So I have Alderwoman Mattis, followed by Russo, followed by... Alderwoman Mattis.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate Attorney Blumer's clarification on what his goals were when he drafted the RFP. It did seem a little vague, and I guess it was sort of intentionally vague because you're just trying to get a start on seeing what's out there so that you can design, you can be more specific later. I do support the idea. And I would have wanted to have a committee meeting on it because I think it's really worth talking about the details of and just getting a more specific idea of, you know, what kinds of workshops are desired. Since it seems to be designed to be just a first step, I'm not against voting yes tonight. Although I do look forward to having an opportunity to understand more details later. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Mattis. Alderman Russo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As vague as this RFP or whatever that seems to be, it's a pretty good thing. I know nothing about it. I think a lot of us have a lot of questions. And I think what it is is a fishing pole and a fishing line, and we're handing it to the mayor to throw it in the water. And there's no money involved. I didn't see any money involved. And let him cast it out and see what comes back. He'll come back with a little fish, a big fish, or a pair of underwear. I don't know. But we'll see what happens, and then he'll have to come back to us. I don't want to delay him. He's got jobs to fill, positions to fill. And I think it's very harmless. And then we'll know more. We'll learn more. I think we'll learn more as this thing, kind of like his attorney Blumer said, we'll even get to know more and learn more about it. I think, I didn't say it exactly like that, but as it gets into it a little further. So I think it's a little vague for a good reason. And when the professionals come from this, we will have more productive meetings and have a lot more, you know, meat and potatoes to them. So that's why I support this, is it's pretty vague. And then the next time we hear about it, I think we'll know where we're going. So I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Russo. I have Alderwoman Ryan, followed by Clifford, followed by Humphrey. Alderwoman Ryan?
Thanks, Matt. I just want to clarify that at no point did I think this was something negative. I do think this is positive. I do think this is an opportunity.
Alderwoman Ryan, I lost your sound. I don't know if that was true for others, too.
Can you hear me?
Yes, clear now.
Yes. Do you need me to repeat what I said? I was just saying that I also see it as an opportunity. I do not see it as anything negative. I simply wanted more answers around the workshops and the services to be provided.
Thank you, Alderwoman Ryan. Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just want to say that I do support this. I do echo the words that Alderman Russo said. I don't think it's going to be harmful to do this. And I think, you know, if the board wants to discuss this in committee afterwards, then we can vote on that. But I'm in support of this.
Thank you, Alderman Clifford. Alderwoman Humphrey?
Thanks. So I don't even recall at this point if there's a motion on the table right now, but I am at a place where I can support voting for this as is. However, if the maker of the motion were willing to refer to committee, I'd be supportive of that as well because I do feel like if we put a little bit more detail in the RFP, we would get stronger responses back. The RFP notes that we'd like to start work on this perhaps in January. And with as broad of a request as this is, I just feel like it's going to be a very iterative process to get to outlining a product that would be useful without adding more detail at this point. Certainly, we can add more detail if the first round of responses come in, or maybe we'll hit the sweet spot and get a winner on the first try. But it just feels like a little bit more detail could go a long way with the first round of responses we would get back. Thanks.
Alderman Attori?
Thanks. Yeah, I was just going to echo exactly what Alderwoman Humphrey just said. I just wanted to have it in committee to talk about it more and try to make it a little bit stronger. But I will support this. Absolutely, the mayor, you know, should be able to do this. That's not a problem. I just wanted to talk about it more and what we could do to make it better in committee. I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Attori. So right now, we have a motion on the table that's been seconded to authorize the mayor to seek an RFP for a consultant. Is there any further discussion, debate around this issue? Hearing and seeing none, all those?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Mac, can you hear it?
Mr. Chairman? If I may, I'll also move to refer this to General Committee.
Second.
We have a motion to refer to General Committee, and it's seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? All those in favor, please indicate.
Chair, share with me one quick question.
Go ahead, Attorney Blumer.
So I didn't know if the maker of the motion wanted us to wait to send out the RFP until we had the General Committee meeting or whether you wanted to just have it in committee so that it could be discussed immediately after we received whatever proposals we got.
So if I may, I have no intention of holding up the process. So I think because we're in budget meetings and then the holiday is right behind us. So I think you could send up the RFPs, and then it's in committee for the board. To Melinda's point, you know, it's possibility to, as it goes through the process and the RFPs would get more defined. I think that's an opportunity for that information to be shared with the committee.
Okay, and I think we probably also could, when we come back with a recommendation, we may be able to provide some examples of what we think would be good initial, you know, what we'd be initially maybe asking the person to to help us through or, you know, provide kind of an additional project-by-project quote based on the hourly rate that they use in their bid.
Alderwoman Humphrey?
Thanks. So it looks like the proposals would be due on December 29th. So I'll tentatively plan on scheduling something for the first week of the new year. And so we can either use that as an opportunity to go through a first kind of read-through of the proposal after the mayor's office has had a look, or we can go from there and decide what would be the best process for us.
Thank you, Alderwoman Humphrey. So we have a motion to refer to General Committee, you know, has been seconded. Is there any further discussion or debate on this issue? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mayor LaRae, we are still on you.
I don't know if you can hear me. It looks like I'm frozen again. But the only other thing that's on the agenda is to untable Chief Engineer William Lovett's nomination.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion on table, and it has been seconded. What's the guidance again on how we go about voting?
I was able to send out an email to everybody this afternoon. So hopefully, if everyone checks their email, they'll see. I think it's called adoodle.org, provides the secret balloting. If you follow the link, it should give you the ability to vote yes or no on the confirmation. And I can check as you go through the rest of the agenda and let you know what the vote tally is.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Blumer. I believe one should have gotten an email this afternoon with a poll. So at this point, when you have a chance, go ahead, log in, vote. We'll get a couple more items. Attorney Blumer has the tally. They'll let me know, and we'll interrupt, and we'll let you know the results.
We need to put down the motion to untable.
Right. All right, so we have a motion to untable, it's been seconded. All those in favor of untabling the nomination of Lovett to Fire Chief, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? All right, so go ahead and look for that poll, get it in. And I will report back out as soon as we've all voted. Mayor LaRae, do you have anything else for the board?
I do not. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the mayor before we move on? I'm hearing and seeing none. So we are on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Does anyone have anything to add or delete from the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
I have one. It's good news.
Oh, go then.
You can remove number five, which is the third executive session. I'm still waiting on the documents from the state. So that hopefully will be next meeting that you'll have that.
Very good. So we will be removing executive session related to negotiation of a contract, number three, airport fire coverage. Is that correct, Attorney Blumer?
Yes.
Phenomenal. Anything else to add or delete from this agenda? All right, in that case, we will move on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up, we have Superintendent Peters, request Georgia funds, pages one through four of your packet.
Thank you. Yep. So what was included in the packet is a request for the uses of Georgia funds for improvement in two areas. One is, you know, if you look at the American Refrigeration Company, our sole provider, is to replace the rusting steel condenser water sump tank. We had chosen to do this project now. It has nothing to do with code, but a good time since we are not operating Georgia to do our replacement now. to do our replacement now. The, um, cost for that is, is to not exceed, I'm looking for the number. It was nineteen thousand, um, nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighteen. So that was the first one. And then while we are doing that, one of our roles has been to replace all the lighting, um, which again has not given, um, time has not given us the opportunity. This will, um, in the future help decrease, um, our electricity bill. Um, but if you've been in there, the lighting in both the arena and the lobby, um, does need to be replaced. So we're also asking to, um, to continue with that project in the next three months with electric to not exceed ten thousand six hundred and sixty.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Right. We have a motion suspended, seconded. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
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 For the post. Motion carries. Alderwoman Davis.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to authorize, uh, the use of the Georgia, excuse me, Georgia fund to cover the expenses for updated lighting in the Georgia facility and replacing the condenser water sump tank.
Second.
All right. We have a motion that's seconded. Any discussion or debate on this?
Point, point of order.
Alderman.
Point of order.
Alderman Gillum, go ahead.
Yes. Um, are we voting on the total amount nineteen thousand? Are we voting on ten thousand? What's the total amount we're voting on here?
The total amount, um, with both projects is thirty thousand three hundred and seventy-eight.
Thank you. Should that be in the motion?
So I can include an amount not to exceed that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So a motion has been seconded, uh, to vote in favor of authorizing Georgia funds to be used. Uh, for the lighting in the facility and replacing condenser wires pump tanks not to exceed the amount of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Kim, do I have that correct?
Correct.
Perfect. Is there any discussion or debate on this? Alderman DePoy.
Kim, is this cash or do we have to liquidate something in order to pay for it?
Um, I believe this is the cash that Mary put aside. And I, the last time I talked to her, she was going to look at specifics. I believe we have over a hundred thousand that's set aside for repairs like this.
Any other discussion or debate on this motion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Superintendent Peters. All right. So we are now on to Brennan Duffy, IRA Director, buyout request. Page five of your packet. Brennan?
Thanks, Matt. I, uh, can everybody hear me okay? I'm on the phone here. So I'm going to assume that is the case and I'll go into, uh, the IRA's recommendation. I'd sent a memo out to the board. Uh, we have a new business looking to open up here in Rutland. In fact, they have in the last few weeks. Uh, it's called Holotype Health LLC. I believe that the, uh, two owners, uh, Jason Bemis and Andy Bernbaum are still on the line with us. So I will let them speak a little bit more about the specifics of their business, but, uh, the recommendation from the IRA is to, uh, award a five thousand dollar buyout grant for the new business to support them. And if, uh, Jason or Andy are on and would like to say a little more about the, uh, the project, I'd let you do that now.
Yes, um, good evening, uh, Mayor Alair, Board of Aldermen and the rest of the public. I really appreciate you taking the time. So I will keep it brief. I grew up in Rutland. I have strong roots here. I've worked in businesses my whole life here. Um, my partner here, Andrew Bernbaum, also had a business, if you're around from two ninety-seven to two thousand, coast to coast silk screening. We've come together now and joined as a team, um, with another partner and we are looking to, we had purchased a space at eighty-nine State Street and we're setting up a light production facility about a really unique kind of clothing line that we really feel connects to Rutland and the environment. And we are asking for, um, final approval on our buyout application.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the board?
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, did, did I hear correctly that this business will be a clothing business?
It will be a clothing production business. All our sales will be e-commerce, but we will, we have created a production facility. We're actually calling from the space here via phone. So sorry for not being online. And we are interviewing our, interviewing our first employee for production this coming weekend. And, um, yeah, so, um, yes, it's light production and, um, we will hopefully upgrade over time to more employees. It's production and fulfillment. Um, we're also going to be taking on some of the production from the company that started here in nineteen ninety-six, which ended up becoming shirtprinting.com. Um, still a very, very strong company. Um, this is a, a piece of that. So we're excited to bring it back to our roots. And, um, and very excited to be here. I can't leave apparently. I, I, I just keep staying and staying and staying and I'm supposed to go between facilities and it's nice to be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Well, a motion suspended, it's been seconded. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman Davis?
And I'll move for the approval of requesting the five thousand dollar grant from the buyout program for holy, Holotype L- LLC. I'm sorry if I did not say that correctly.
No, it's back to someone listening at the final. We really appreciate everyone taking the time. Thank you so much. Um, stay safe and, um, yeah, thank you for your time.
So we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion or debate on the issue? Alderman Garuso.
Did you say your last name is Bemis?
I certainly did. I thought that might come up. When I heard the speaking of golf earlier, I was already reminiscing.
Are you related to Arthur Bemis?
Yes, he is my father.
He's the designer behind this new venture.
Yeah.
One of the most brilliant people I've ever met in my life, and I mean that sincerely. But you're, you tell him your name has nothing to do with what you do. Tell him he needs to work on that.
Yeah, I'll try.
I've been driving his office for many years.
I really appreciate that.
But I, I support the motion and, uh, I wish you guys all the luck in the world. Arthur's a wonderful man too.
I love that a lot, Arthur, as well.
Yeah, we'll say, we'll pass that right along to my dad. He'll love that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or debate on this motion? Hearing and seeing none. With all those in favor approving this buyout grant, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good night. Good night.
All right. We are moving right along to Barbara Spalding, IRA, twenty twenty D-Trans Bicycle and Pedestrian Program Award Request, pages six through eight of your packet.
Hi, this is Barbara. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. So as my memo states in your packet, we were awarded a grant from V-Trans Bicycle and Pedestrian Program for a scoping study of Center Street. And we are requesting that you assign the mayor as authorized municipal official so that he can execute any and all documents necessary for the grant, specifically the PCF that is attached, um, to the memo in your packet, which is the project commitment form. And then following this document will be the official grant agreement.
Thank you, Barbara. Alderwoman Mattis.
Um, yeah, Barbara, what is a scoping study? I mean, I, I think I know what that is. Can you explain a little more?
It's a scoping study. I think at this point it's going to be a, um, traffic analysis. It'll be above ground. That's, they'll be scoping out the, uh, Center Street for above ground, uh, prod, for above ground project to, to continue what we did over the summer for that pilot program.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome. It happens prior to engineering and design. It also allows us to get some feedback from the public.
Thank you, Barbara. So I am looking for a motion to authorize the mayor's time.
Suspend the rules.
Second.
All right. We have a motion suspended and it has been seconded. But all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll move to designate the mayor as an authorized municipal, municipal official to sign any and all documents necessary to execute the grant, specifically the attached project commitment form.
Second.
All right. We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on the issue? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Barbara.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. And very quickly before we go on, we do have the results of who is now officially Chief William Lovett in a vote of ten to oh, was one person who we think probably just didn't find the link, which does happen sometimes. So congratulations, Chief Lovett.
Thank you very much. I want to, I want to thank the mayor for his vote of confidence and all of your vote of confidence. It means a lot. Um, but what really tops all of that really is the support I've been getting from the staff here at the Fire Department. It's definitely going to be a great time and I appreciate the opportunity to lead this, uh, great group of people.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Amen.
Congratulations, Chief Lovett. Well deserved.
Speed, Billy Boy.
Now normally I feel like we'd have to take a bunch of pictures, but I don't think that's going to work tonight. So I apologize.
Nah, that's a problem. No.
Usually it was cake.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Usually it was cake.
Well, hopefully we can, we'll, we'll be having some of these in the future. I appreciate it.
All right, very good. Um, so we're now on to Commissioner Wenberg. Uh, planning advance, final design combination Piedmont ponds, page nine. Commissioner Wenberg.
Yes, so, um, I believe in your last meeting, you authorized, uh, or approved the, uh, contract with, uh, Malona McBroom to actually do this work contingent upon the approval of funding from the state. This is the request for the funding from the state. Uh, as you can see, it's, well, we, I sent out, uh, a nearly completed draft of the application this afternoon. It's as close as we could get and give you some time to look at it. This is, um, a little bit overkill and overkill in terms of what the state's information they're asking for, for these funds. Uh, the main thing is this is called a planning advance, which is technically a loan against the, uh, Clean Water State Revolving Fund. They've also already indicated that, uh, we certainly, this project is completely eligible. Um, under the current rules, because they have a lot of funds available for this type of work. And they want to encourage as much as possible. When the work is completed, uh, it is one hundred percent forgivable. That is to say, they convert the loan into a grant if we do it now. So not only do we need to do it now just because we're ready, but, um, we also may have the, well, we do have the opportunity right at the moment to, uh, to borrow the money, but never have to pay it back. Um, and again, this is for the work to do the final design for combination of Piedmont ponds related, related to the Moon Brook, uh, temperature issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Wenberg.
So motion to suspend the rules, take the issue up tonight.
Second.
Right. We have a motion to suspend. It's been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute on the behalf a planning advance application for funding of the final design and modifications to combination of Piedmont ponds.
Second.
Right. We have a motion that's been seconded. Um, is there any discussion or debate on the issue? This is, we're looking at Alderman Garuso.
Yeah, Jeff, uh, I just don't know if this is the place to ask the question, but the president of the, uh, Koanis Club has a big interest in this, that, um, that's where they have their annual fishing derby. And wanted to, said that they have a, a big interest in this and wanted to, I, I guess, I don't know if they want to be involved with it or, or if they just want to be on top of this. Is this thing ready to go? Or are we still a long ways away from the design of it and, you know, the dredging it out and the design and the finished product? We're still a long way from that.
Well, hopefully not. Um, this, this would be the last step. This would lead to permitting and, um, construction. And so, you know, it would be great if we could begin construction, um, next summer. That would be ideal. Uh, we don't want to push it back any longer than that. And, uh, the, the final design is about thirty percent done under a previous contract. So it is well along. Um, those folks and all the neighbors have been actively involved over the last five years in the development of the design and have, um, had the opportunity to, oh, extensive opportunity, multiple meetings to comment and provide direction as, as has the state. So we sort of have this alignment of planets right now where we have a, a design approach that is, uh, widely accepted by the, uh, butters and the neighbors and the other people with an interest such as the leadership of the Koanis Club, Trout Unlimited, some others that have, that Walton County Trout Unlimited and some others that have been involved. And also, uh, the, uh, belief or support on the part of the state that this particular design will in fact achieve the temperatures we need in, in Moon Brook to restore it as a cold water fishery. So, um, we're ready to move ahead, um, with the, uh, final step, which is final design and construction. This isn't authorizing construction. It's just to complete the design, however.
Yeah. Well, that's all. I just want to make sure because I know Rutland, Wreckin' Parks is usually involved with the fishing derby. It's been all going on since I was a kid. I may have been at the first one. I don't remember. It's long ago, but it's just that it's, it's kind of an institution in Rutland. I'd hate to see them snubbed by it, you know? So you, but you say they've been involved. So that's good. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Garuso. Alderwoman Humphrey.
Thanks. Um, so I just wanted to note that, um, Commissioner Wenberg has done a great job of bringing all the neighbors and butters along the entire process and we've had lots of opportunities to provide input and, um, the neighborhood is thankful for that. And many of the neighbor, well, not many of the neighbors, but I know at least a couple are also members of the Koanis Club. So, um, had they, had the Koanis itself not had the opportunity to attend, I know those members were in attendance as well. But Jeff, I did have a question, um, from one of my neighbors. They saw this on the agenda tonight and I think there's a little confusion. So they, they wanted to see the final design that they were thinking we were voting on tonight. And I told them, we weren't voting on a final design tonight. We're giving approval to go forward to create the final design. And you have at this point pretty much the final, uh, uh, subset of input from us that you're going to use to, uh, inform that design. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And again, it was a preliminary design that was completed and that's the basis of the final design. So the location of the trees, the species of the trees, the footprint of the pond, the amount of dredging that's going to take place. All of that has been presented to, um, it's been a while since it's been done because it was a while ago, about a year ago, I think, uh, maybe longer. I don't know. Lots, stuff all blends together all the time. But in any event, uh, the preliminary design is the basis, but that's not a construction plan. plan or a bidding document. So we need to take the preliminary design, which has had review and a lot of support by all the parties I mentioned, and take that and convert that into something that can be the basis for contracts and construction, permitting too.
Got it. Thank you. I think because we'd all been through that process and seen some of those preliminary designs, I myself was a little bit confused. There's just this one more step in there to make it, the construction design, as you say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Commissioner Wenberg on this issue? Hearing and seeing none. We have a motion that has been seconded to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries. All right. So we're up to Commissioner Wenberg, joint usage agreement, GMP, pages 10 through 14 of our packet.
I have a feeling after this month, you folks will be thankful to see me go. I'm really wearing out my welcome tonight, but I appreciate your patience. The joint use agreement with Green Mountain Power. This gets to the forest main and then after this one, we're going to bounce back to combination pond, but let's stick on the forest main for the time being. We tried, as the memo explains and relatively briefly, we tried several attempts to laterally drill, which is the original plan, without having to do a much surface excavation. And the subsurface soils wouldn't allow that to happen. So we had to come up with another plan. The other plan is a more conventional, dig a trench, put a pipe in it, cover over the trench and make the connections. In order to do that, we need to follow a path that goes outside the existing easements that we have for the other two pipes that have been in there since 1972. At least one of them has been in there since 1972. Actually, there was a predecessor of that one. It was in since the 60s. The, so we don't have all of the easements we require in order to follow the path we need to follow for the new pipe. In the last meeting, you approved a modified easement with Green Mountain Power, which is in the form of an agreement. Therefore, you had to approve it. It wasn't just a grant to the city, but there were conditions that went both ways and you approved that. There is another one that is required from Belden that does not require your approval because it's a direct grant to the city. All it requires is Belden's signature and I believe that's either in hand or on its way. However, on the other side of East Creek, we will need to cross a tiny little area that is currently owned by Granger Enterprises, which is one of Joe Jean Cola's companies. And it also has an easement to Green Mountain Power. They have overhead power lines. So we need two things. We need permission from Granger Enterprises in order to run the pipe across there and we need permission from Green Mountain Power, again, in order to run it within the easement that they have. The, this request is for this Green Mountain Power approval and the Jean Cola request is coming up later. But there, it's the same piece of land, it's the same pipe, it's the same everything. So this is again, an agreement, not just an easement. So it requires the mayor's signature and therefore we're requesting your approval. The language here has been, I believe, provided, Matt can speak to this, but I believe it's been provided by Green Mountain Power, reviewed and everybody's in agreement that this does what we need and we recommend your approval.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend and it has been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion to authorize here to sign the easement between the city and Green Mountain Power, Jeff. Let's play page.
Authorize.
Joint use agreement between the city and GMP.
We have a motion that's been seconded. It is to authorize the mayor to execute the attached joint use agreement with Green Mountain Power, allowing the city to construct, inspect, operate, maintain, reconstruct, remove and repair underground sewage force mains, with a portion of the easement granted to Green Mountain Power by Granger Enterprises. Is there any discussion or debate on the issue? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Commissioner Wenberg, and we have you up again.
Can't say it anymore.
Take it away.
Okay, this is relatively straightforward. The funding that we have secured to do the construction for, at least the starting construction, the heavy lifting construction for a combination in Piedmont Ponds, which we already have, is through what's called a whisper grant. Actually, it's the first one the state's ever issued. We're the first recipients of that. It's about $670,000. However, our application detailed that we were going to use that money as a match for Corps of Engineers 542 program that would have filled in the rest of the funding and gotten a project done through their efforts as opposed to ours. In the last meeting, again, in the last meeting, we explained that we had basically decided that we were not going to proceed with the Army Corps of Engineers program for a variety of reasons that were explained at that time. But because the whisper grant application indicated that that's how the money was going to be used, we need to amend the application and explain what the new plan is. And that requires your approval and that is what this is. It's basically an amendment. The dollars are exactly the same. But instead of using it as match for a Army Corps of Engineers federal program, we intend to use the dollars directly to do the, at least first phase of the construction work, the first $670,000. And that's what the amendment basically explains.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, we have to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion suspended and it has been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries.
There's so many places, people to sign in the back of this. Who exactly do we? Do we want it? The mayor? I mean, there's enough authorized signatures.
Historically, we've circulated for signatures. That obviously doesn't work nowadays. So recently the state has, and we've done this previously, the state has allowed a separate document affirming by the city clerk that the board authorized the mayor to execute on your behalf and then the mayor would sign that. And that is substituted for that big, long list.
That's the motion.
Second.
Right, we have a motion that's been seconded. I'll read it back, just to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute on behalf of the attached amended application for the whisper funding for combination in Piedmont Pond. Is there any discussion or debate on the issue? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Wenberg. I believe that's it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Probably not, because the city attorney has asked me to take up the first item on his list, but I'll let him tell you.
All right. So we have Attorney Blumer's executive sessions, which will move to the end. So we are on to reports of standing committees, of which we have none. Reports of select committees, of which we have none. Reports of representatives. Oh, of which we have none. I'm sorry, I realize two of the things from Attorney Blumer were not actually executive sessions. I'm just not used to that. So I'm going to move quickly back to the sale of city-owned property. Attorney Blumer.
Thank you, yes. And this is the one that I am going to ask Jeff if he would take the lead. He was nice enough to draft this memo and he actually may be, he and the mayor, I think, are a little bit more familiar with the plans for this particular piece of property. This is not a piece of property that we acquired via tax sale, which is what you've what you've seen most recently when we've asked for these motions. This is, actually Jeff may even have some of the history of how we came to own this particular piece of property, but I'll, he said he's willing, so I'll let him kind of give you the Cliff Notes from his memo. And then obviously if there's any questions that either he or the mayor or I can answer, we can do so.
All right. So this is related to that easement for the Granger Enterprises property for the forest main. But before we get to that, Mr. Jean Cola has requested really some time ago that the city sell or otherwise convey to him about 2,000 square feet. It's a narrow triangular, but long, narrow strip of land adjacent to one of his industrial buildings behind the shopping plaza, the old Patch Wagner facility. And it's actually part of the land that's involved in what's called Spruce Street Extension, which is the pathway that goes back there. The, that property was acquired back when the Spruce Street Extension work was done and the city acquired the other adjacent property where the train station is. And so that was all assembled at that time. What Mr. Jean Cola wants to do is he wants to build in addition to his industrial, the Patch Wagner facility, and I don't remember the number of bays, but it would be a a number of commercial industrial spaces, you know, consistent with the other uses in that industrial property. And the city, the city engineer has reviewed it. There's been a survey done that's been documented and approved. And the Department of Public Works has absolutely no objection. There's, this is a tiny little strip of land that we just can't imagine that the city would ever need. And we believe that the highest and best use would be to put it on the tax rolls, have it enable the creation of jobs and additional tax base, which is exactly what Mr. Jean Cola proposes to do. What connects that with the situation over at, on the other side of East Creek for the forest main is that we require from Mr. Jean Cola, that is, Granger Enterprises, an easement. So what Mr. Jean Cola has proposed, and we certainly have no objection, we see it's a plus for the city on both sides, is that we swap. That is to say, we would transfer the 2,000 square feet so he can build his his industrial space, expand his industrial space. And he would sign over an easement of the same piece of land as the Green Mountain Power joint use agreement so that we can get our pipe in the ground. Those negotiations haven't concluded. I should inform the board and this is something that Matt can speak to and the mayor. So the wording of the actual request, the motion that has been suggested in the summary, the wording is somewhat unusual in that it basically grants the mayor the authority to basically make the final decision about the nature of the transaction. But we cannot authorize the transfer or the sale of any property that the city owns without the board's approval. So we're basically asking for your approval and author, of that, and then authorize the mayor to determine when, if, and on what terms the property is conveyed and authorize the mayor to sign all sale-related documents. That language, of course, was written by the city attorney. So that's the nature of the request.
Yeah, I think you called him here a little broken up there. Just to echo Jeff's thing, I've seen the blueprints of what Mr. Jean Cola is doing. And I have to tell you, like, when you take a look at Durkin's Cleaners went out of business and he has a business in there and he bought Loris's Auto Body Shop and he has a business in there and in these tough times, he's, Joe's filling up, you know, empty spaces and creating new businesses. And what's kind of neat about that was he was showing how someone can build, move in there and expand. And if he can build these additional, he called them incubator spaces, that they can grow into them, grow up in them, or he can, of course, can move them out into something bigger within the city. And that's one of the things, I think all of his properties are within the city. I don't think he owns anything in the town and he's into the city. He's got a proven record. And I've seen that piece of land almost looks like something, maybe a train track went on. It's almost like curved like a train track or something, maybe 100 years ago. So from what I've seen, it doesn't do us any good, but it would do as good as a piece of property paying taxes, like Jeff said, and let him get his building on it and get that paying taxes. So I'm in favor of any proposed motions or documents you guys get to do that and we get our sewer main too. But aside from that, I think it's a pretty, you know, I said, he's got a, he's a good horse to bet on. He's got a lot of buildings that he's filled up and he doesn't take vacancies too lightly. So, you know, he'll probably fill that up and get some, you know, good money coming in on the tax rolls with, you know, what do they call it? Inventory tax and whatever. So I support whatever you guys bring back, Jeff, I really do.
Thank you, Alderman Russo.
Suspend the rules.
We have a motion to suspend. It was seconded by Alderman Gillum. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries.
So I will move to approve the city's conveyance of a 2,032 square foot parcel of land to Joseph Jean Cola as described in a survey titled Lands of the City of Rutland to be conveyed to Joseph Jean Cola, prepared on 2/24/20 pursuant to 6/2 on the Rutland City Charter. And to authorize the mayor to determine when, if, and on what terms the property is conveyed and to authorize the mayor to sign all sale-related documents.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion or debate on this issue? Alderman Russo.
I had to shut off my mic and sneeze there for a minute, but I would just add, not only Mr. Jean Cola, Granger Enterprises in there. So, yeah, Jeff said yes. Granger Enterprises is the corporate name too.
Very good. Any other discussion or debate on this issue? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Wenberg.
Thank you very much and thank you for your patience through all of that. I appreciate it very much.
All right, very good. We have up next, RFP, Recommendation for Stormwater Mitigation at CSJ. Attorney Blumer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I did send a memo amongst probably several other emails that you received from me this weekend. And this was a RFP that we went out with after the last meeting. Just to quickly give you the summary of what we're trying to accomplish. The state has a stormwater mitigation rule, which is called the three acre rule. If you have more than three acres of impervious surface, you're required to build in some stormwater runoff mitigation so that the water is kind of filtered before it hits the watershed sheds. So because the college campus was subject to the rule, we think that our purchase and our parcel is going to be subject to the rule as well. We'll have just about three acres anyways, but even if we're under, our understanding is that the subdivision would not allow our piece of the property to be exempted. So what we're trying to do prior to purchase is have an engineer come and look and give us some different alternatives as to how we can mitigate the stormwater runoff and, you know, approximately what those costs might be, just so that we can go into the purchase, which is scheduled for the end of March, kind of with our eyes open as to what the possible expense could be to come into compliance with this particular rule. So we did do the RFP. Um, so we did did do the RFP, we got several responses, um, and at the bottom, kind of outlined that um, you know, every determined that everybody was qualified. Um, Brennan Duffy i- is uh kind of doing project management on on the purchase and on a lot of the permitting and these type of things. So he he did a lot of legwork, and I appreciate um, appreciate that. He he did the reference checks, and um, he, uh, Jim Rantondo, the city engineer, and I um kind of reviewed what what we received, and um, the lowest priced uh response was Engineering Ventures PC, which is out of Burlington, um, and they they had good references, uh, so that's what we we are recommending. Um, and when you're ready for the motion, I did have one um addition to what I had put in my memo, and I can give you the language, but um, basically, we we need somewhere to um to pull this money from, and what our suggestion was, was to authorize the use of up to seven thousand dollars, just to give us a small buffer um, uh, from that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars Zomias settlement that we had earlier this summer. Um, so I can give you the language to um add to to whatever motions put on the table if you're following the memo.
Thank you, Attorney Blumer. So I'm looking for a motion to suspend.
So.
Second.
A motion to suspend, and it has been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. So Attorney Blumer, uh, what would the language be now for this motion?
Yeah, I can just read the whole motion, and then if someone would move it, that would be, that probably makes the most sense. So um, the motion would be to confirm the selection of Engineering Ventures PC to perform professional services related to engineering feasibility analysis, conceptual design, and cost estimates for stormwater runoff mitigation measures on approximately twenty acres at the former CSJ campus, and to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract for professional services with said firm in a form approved by the city attorney, and to authorize the use of up to seven thousand dollars from the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars Zomias settlement.
So. Second.
Alright, we have a motion, it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Alderman Attori.
Thanks. Um, I guess my only uh pause here is the CSJ money. Um, and I guess I'm wondering, um, it feels like we need to keep track of these things, you know, the the pieces that we are investing into getting this facility to the right place. Um, and so I worry if we start picking money from here and from there, that we might lose that a little bit. Um, it feels like it's got to come from the professional services line of the rec department. I, you know, I understand that it's not budgeted for. Um, I think that's where the contingency comes in. But it feels like we need to keep track of this instead of just use uh bits of that money, uh, you know, little bit at a time. Um, so I'm concerned about that part. I don't know if anybody has any input on that.
If if I may, I I think Mary's still on. Um, we've we've been having um kind of every other week meetings to kind of talk through the different punch list items for everybody needs to do um, uh, to kind of in 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 time for the purchase, and last meeting, I think Mary had um, had had some discussions with the auditors about how they thought it should best be accounted for. I don't know that that necessarily impacts where the money comes from, but she may be able to speak, speak to, you know, her her recommendation as to um, you know, how we go about. There there will be some additional, um, I think there will be some additional expenses heading into the closing, um, you know, above and beyond the purchase price. Um, so there may be other other times where we're coming um to the board to ask for unbudgeted funds, so maybe if Mary has thoughts on that, she can, she can weigh in.
Yeah, thank you, um, Matt. Um, when the auditors were here, I kind of questioned how how to best account for this for exactly what you're questioning, uh, just really keeping all the expenses in one place. So we, I I will be creating an additional um capital fund for the CSJ purchase. We'll put the grant in there. We'll, you know, if we're going to approve transfers from Zomias, you'll see a transfer. So we can keep those expenses in one fund, so I think that would be the best way for that to work. Kind of like the White's Fund, we had the White's Fund where we had the pool bond in there. We had everything related to the pool in the White's Fund, so we'll create another fund for that rec purchase.
Alderman Attori.
Thanks. Um, so it feels like um to me that uh I I I think that, you know, having it come out of uh, you know, the professional, however Mary wants to keep track of it, I'm just not sure we need to say right now that it's coming from the CSJ piece. I, you know, I think the discussion about whether or not we uh provide, uh, you know, we capitalize that fund with CSJ money or with the uh Zomias money. Um, I, it is the discussion that we need to have in Finance Committee, and, you know, we'll kind of do that after budget uh season here. Um, but it feels like uh, it it feels like that's a big discussion, um, but we want to get this done now. And so, you know, we could always backfill with Zomias if that's what we decided to do. Um, but it feels like that's not the appropriate place right now. Um, you know, maybe once we decide to 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 backfill, you know, whether that's a hundred thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars. Um, you know, a number of people have come to me and said they don't want to spend any of that Zomias money into CSJ. Um, I think there's good reason to do it, um, but I think those are the conversations that we have to have before we start just taking out a few uh thousand dollars um, at a time. Um, so I don't know where we take it from otherwise, if that's just contingency. Um, but I I I'm not in favor of of doing it out of the Zomias at this point.
Thank you, Alderman Attori. Alderman Grusso.
Yeah, I haven't a clue what we're talking about. I I see it on the agenda. I uh text Matt or whatever earlier and asked him because I I got a printer problem at work. I could probably print a hundred pages a second, but I've, since this virus started, nobody has come to fix it. And um, so I'm kind of hurting because I don't really have a good printer. Um, and I don't know what we're talking about here. I don't, I don't, I've I've got email on my phone, and I didn't see it. Whatever we're talking about gets sent to me. Is there a chance we could table this and uh maybe deal with it in the next meeting? Because uh, it sounds like a lot of money, and I'm, I don't know the whole board's in on it.
Motion to table. This is Attorney Blumer. The motion to table.
Um, yeah, I mean, well, motion to, motion to table, I think a motion to table is non-debatable, so I don't know if that means I can add anything or not, but um, you know, you you tell me, I guess I'm the parliamentarian, but I, you tell me what your preference is as far as.
Do we have a second? Okay, so doesn't go forward due to lack of seconds. So Attorney Blumer, I think you can weigh in.
Okay, um, well, I was gonna quickly say, and then I can give a little bit more background, but um just from a timing perspective, because uh, March thirty-first will actually kind of sneak up on us, and the engineers um are gonna need, you know, most of, most of the time between probably now and February to to kind of get us uh um something useful that we can then, you know, react to prior to um the closing. Um, I would recommend that that you approve this out of somewhere um tonight, and then maybe also do a dual motion to um send to committee, uh, to the Finance Committee. Um, you know, as to how you want to handle things going forward, and whether this would be um, you know, kind of re, whether some, you know, there's my settlement or some other fund would would reimburse this amount. I don't, Kim's not on, I don't think, so I don't know. Um, you know, how much, how much room she has in her professional services line, or whether this could um, cover it, or if she thinks she's gonna underspend other other lines. Um, so you know, you could, you could approve it out of the unassigned fund balance, um, and then again, decide whether uh, you would just reimburse it from the money that Mary's kind of set aside as that Zomias settlement. Um, but I think time is of the of the essence to get get those folks working on this, so that we will have um, a sense as to, you know, is it uh, you know, fifty thousand dollar project, or is it, you know, a six, six-figure project? Um, I think that would be useful to know prior to closing rather than um, you know, find out, find out afterwards. Um, and I can, for for Sam's benefit, I can um, you know, just kind of go through this again quickly. Um, so because of the uh Agency Natural Resources Rule, uh, that anybody who has property that has over three acres of this impervious surface has to comply um, within, I think the the earliest is maybe twenty twenty-one, and we'd probably have additional time um, to do so, but we would be subject to it um at some point. So before we purchase the property, I think um, you know, due diligence-wise, I wanted the board to understand, you know, what that expense might be um, you know, down the line, and these engineers are going to be able to provide us, they're gonna go out to the site, they're gonna look at, um, you know, do do their magic as far as um, uh, you know, being able to tell if water falls at a certain rate, you know, where is it gonna go, and what sort of um mitigation features do you need? Most of us have seen those kind of rock gardens. The hospital has one now with their new um, construction um to the west of their new new wing. Um, so that the engineers will be providing us with kind of those broad design and concept ideas, and then giving us their best guess at a price tag for each of those, so that we'll have a a better understanding of um what our options are and how much it's gonna cost. And I I should also, not to complicate things, but with the with the proposed um uh, construction of the assisted living facility, um, there may also be an opportunity to do a joint project with them, and having a baseline to know what it would cost to do it on our own would be helpful when we get into those conversations with um, the Heartland Development Group, because we'll have a sense as to if we go on our own, it'll cost this much, but whatever they're proposing to do, maybe a joint stormwater management system, um, you know, we can compare the two, so that if that gives you a little bit more um, uh, background, Sam.
Much, much better. I was gonna say much better, just, so you're kind of doing what we were talking about earlier. You're just, you're just fishing right now. You don't need any money.
Well, we need the um, the the bid is sixty-five hundred, um, but one way or another, um, we're gonna have to spend this, the sixty-five hundred, whether it's now or whether it's after we buy the the property, um, because the the engineers are gonna have to do this work to um, you know, develop um some kind of system for treating that stormwater um before it gets into the creek uh or into the into the watershed. So we are asking for this, well, I I said seven thousand, just again, to give a buffer, just in case there's um, you know, some additional fees, but um, but but that would be out of pocket right now, um, and we're, we're just sort of trying to decide where that might come from if if uh the board's comfortable um, uh, awarding the bid to this Engineering Ventures firm.
I got you. Elder Woman Humphrey?
Thank you. So, um, is there a motion on the floor right now, and does it include language for the Zomias?
Um, that's the motion that I read. I don't know if anyone moved it.
Okay.
Yeah, it it was moved and seconded.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Elder Woman Gillum. Elder Woman Davis.
Okay, so um, I I I guess I'm gonna go back a ways, and I'm gonna go back to pre-vote. And when we had this conversation about uh putting this on the ballot and uh hopefully purchasing the gymnasium at the College of St. Joseph, there was a discussion then about how do we meet some of the unanticipated needs that may come up at the college for repairs or other expenses? And that's when we refer the Zomias account to the Finance Committee. And Alderman Attori is correct. We haven't met on it because there was no need to meet on it prior to the vote, because if it was a a no vote, then it was a moot point. But it wasn't a no vote. It was an overwhelming positive yes vote. I've not heard anybody talk about Zomias money to to me, and don't use it forever. Nothing but positive for that gymnasium, that they're grateful, that they can't wait for the use, that this and that. So I don't see a big deal using seven thousand dollars in Zomias when we use sixteen thousand dollars for marketing. This was voted on by the public overwhelmingly. So I, you know, this makes no sense to me. I I think we call the question.
Uh.
Second.
Elder Woman Davis. Okay, you are officially calling the question, and it was seconded.
Point of order. I
Elder Woman.
I had my hand raised before, and I never got a chance to speak.
Elder Woman Mattis, uh, I do understand your point. Uh, you can call the question at any time. I do believe, and Attorney Blumer, I may have some wrong, it takes two-thirds of the the present board to call a question, correct?
Yes.
Roll call.
Okay. So so to the point, Elder Woman Mattis, if you would still like to discuss the issue, you have every right to vote against it, but if two-thirds of the board votes to call the question, then we will immediately take your vote. Uh, and Alderman Attori has requested roll call vote, so we'll turn it over to Clerk Heck. I wonder not to call the question.
Alderman Grusso.
Yes.
Elder Woman Humphrey.
No.
Woman Ryan.
No.
Woman Tori.
No.
Elder Talbot.
No.
Elder Woman Mattis?
No.
Elder Gillum?
Yes.
Clifford?
Yes.
Woman DePoy?
No, let's stay here till ten-thirty.
Elder Woman Davis?
Yes.
So, one, two, three, four, six, no, or yes, fails to call the question.
Motion fails to call the question. Uh, four in favor, six opposed, achieve the two-thirds required majority. Uh, so I will go first. Elder Woman Mattis did have her hand raised, followed by Alderman Attori.
Thank you. Um, so, you know, this has come up before, and every time it comes up, using Zomias funds for things that just don't exactly match the Zomias fund, it just makes me very uneasy. This is only seven thousand dollars. I'm absolutely in favor of spending this money. We need to spend it. We need to do this thing um, for the stormwater uh runoff mitigation. It it has to be done. It might as well be done now. I just, can't we get that seven thousand dollars from somewhere else? I think Alderman Attori is correct. We need to keep track of this stuff, and even if it just looks like the dot on an eye, I think it's important enough to keep track of it and to to be careful of it. Um, I I'm not comfortable with this, just kind of tossing thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there. It it makes me uncomfortable. Um, so I'm in favor of spending the money, just not from Zomias. Thank you.
Alderman Attori.
Thank you. Um, I will echo Elder Woman Mattis on that one. I'm absolutely in favor of this. We need to do it before we buy it, absolutely, a hundred percent. We need to keep track, and to Elder Woman Davis's point about the Zomias money, um, the reason it needs to go to committee and have the discussion is because, as you know, uh, people feel that it is for economic development and specifically of downtown. That's debatable. That's a question. I'm in favor of putting some money into that capitals, capital fund, but it's a conversation that we should have as a board, um, i- i- as a, in a deliberate conversation, um, not just kind of a few thousand dollars here and there, and we approved the sixteen thousand dollars because it was for economic development in line with the way we've always done. Thank you.
Uh, Attorney Blumer, you had sent a message to me, and then followed by Alderman Grusso.
Yes, I was just gonna point out, from a strictly legal perspective, um, and I I tried to point this out this summer, but um, there was a lot going on at at that meeting when we were discussing the the Zomias settlement, but just just from a purely legal perspective, um, money that we were receiving, you know, through the impact fees, were going into the Zomias fund, and and those were um, you know, restricted, you know, kind of a broad restriction, but the restricted to but restricted to economic development. And, you know, as some have read into it, the downtown economic development. But one thing I, I just want everyone to be clear on is that these Zomias settlement funds do not have any restrictions. So, you know, technically, you could use it to, you know, whatever, you know, buy, buy three new police cars if, if you wanted to. Now, you may, you know, not want to use it for those purposes, and you may want to treat it more like, you know, Zomias was originally intended. But I just want people to understand that they, that you do have the option to, to use it for whatever you want. And that may be part of your discussion. When you have the committee meeting is, you know, you could potentially put some of it back into the Zomias fund, and then it would be restricted. Or you, you know, my understanding is that Mary has it sort of accounted for separately in, in some way. So that it, again, it's, it's clear that it's not to be treated exactly the same as those Zomias funds that, that were put in through the, you know, the agreement that existed. So I just wanted to make that point so that you know that your hands aren't tied.
Alderman Garuso.
Having been around, I think Alderman Davis would agree. And I, I don't want to get into any match over this. But I remember the Zomias account was to help downtown. And it, it, and it could use all the help it could get right now. But what I really originally put my hand up for was when we got into the rec center, I'll admit, I opposed it. It's a beautiful place. It's a gorgeous place. And I'm glad the voters voted in favor of it. One of the concerns I had along the way, it's like buying a beautiful, beautiful used car. And you pull into the repair shop and say, I need a lube oil and filter. And the guy says, hey, uh, the transmission's gone. You need a five thousand dollar transmission or whatever one goes for three thousand, you know? That's the fear I had was, you got to find the money. You own this now. And wherever it comes from, if it comes out of somebody's budget, it's got to come from somewhere. But that's, we own it. The voters bought it. And, you know, I was just wondering if we had any, I remember the budget meeting there the other night, talking to the young lady that run, that's the, the, I don't remember her head, name now, the, the superintendent. You got to have a fund for that because there are unexpected costs with everything, with a home, with a car, and with a rec center. And we, I'm sorry, but I'm in favor of wherever we get the money, even if it is out of the Zomias account. Because we got to keep this ball rolling. We got to close on it. We got to do what we have to do. We've got obligations in this. So wherever the money comes from, it's the city of Rutlands, and the voters told us to buy it. Now we got to go get the money to do it.
Thank you, Alderman Garuso. I have Alderman DePoy, followed by Alderwoman Mattis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, spending the seven thousand on this, I think, is going to be well-spent money because it's money that, first of all, it's, it's not going to have to come out of the taxpayer's pocket. But second of all, it's going to help the recreation center, which, as we know, already has shown that it can generate revenue to offset its costs, which helps the taxpayers. And I think that when that comes fully online, once we get through COVID, once we get through the, the initial period of figuring this facility out, I think that it's really going to create a lot of money. But we've got to do those first things, as Alderman Garuso mentioned. You know, there are some things that are going to come up. But also, we know that that was a very well-built building. It's been a little neglected in the last few years. But with our maintenance crew over there, they have done yeoman's work on getting that place, getting the, the issues identified, which we have known about now in the last year. And also fixing a lot of things. The boilers, you know, the roof was fixed, air exchange systems that they have down there. So I think that, you know, spending a little bit out of the Zomias fund at this point is going to save the taxpayers quite a bit of money as we go down this road of having a community center like this. So I think it's well-spent Zomias money. And, and it definitely impacts the bottom line for the taxpayers. So, uh, thank you.
Alderwoman Mattis.
Thank you. Now, I'm thinking back, and I'm glad that Attorney Blumer mentioned that this is the Zomias settlement money and not the Zomias fund money, which is an important difference. And I remember that when we were talking about this, when we were discussing purchasing the gym, that we were talking about a hundred thousand dollars of a contingency fund. And I believe that it came up at that time, when we were talking about the Zomias settlement, that, you know, I, I seem to recall us mentioning that it would be something that we were interested in applying to the gym, as I, as I recall. And so now that I heard what Attorney Blumer said about the difference between the settlement and the funds, I'm not as much against it. However, and, and I don't know much about accounting, but doesn't this line really belong in the professional services budget for, for the rec department? Isn't that where this money properly belongs? And, and, and I know this is a picky question, but I think I heard Alderman Tori say, you know, can we pay it out of there and then, and then backfill it? I, I don't know what's possible. I guess I'm just wanting to understand the accounting just a little bit more because I do think it's important to keep track of everything that we're spending on this. Again, I absolutely support us spending the money. I just want to make sure it's coming out of the proper line. And if anyone could speak to that, that would be lovely, just from an accounting perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Mattis. If I may, Treasure Markowski, are you on? And do you have a professional opinion you would provide us regarding this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on. And I, I recognize the need to, to separate those expenses so we can watch them. So when you're saying you wanted it a professional services line, I would definitely post it in that CSJ. We have CSJ accounts. But it's overspending the line. It's an unbudgeted expense. So is it more appropriate to come out of the contingency line? It's really, and that's why we're looking at Zomias as another source for funds. So it's really up to you as a board, where are we going to get the funds to pay for that? Because it is truly an unbudgeted expense. We could overspend a line for sure. But where are we going to get the money from?
Thank you, Treasure Markowski. Merrill Lair. You're on mute, Merrill Lair.
Well, if I could help to facilitate this discussion a little bit and move things along. We did have this discussion internally earlier today, knowing that there would probably be some sort of discussion about where these funds would come. I think everybody's in agreement that it, it's a needed expense. I would encourage you to approve the spending so we can move things along. Once you get through the holidays and into the January, March thirty-first is going to come very fast. And a lot of these things are going to have to be moved along. And this is not the least of which it, it could be. If it's the board's approval and, and it's going to help you along, I have no problem taking it out of the contingency firsthand and then backfilling that if it needs to be. Once the board has their committee meeting about how much and what they want to take out of the Zomias settlement account. Either way you do it, you are going, it's going to be kept track of. Mary is going to make every effort, and so will I, to keep track of any expenses that come out that go toward the facilitation of, of purchasing the, the property. So, you know, if that helps a lot, it is the mayor's contingency fund. It is, oh, I think at last note, the question came up last week at a budget meeting. How much has been spent out of there this, this year so far? And I think it was a thousand out of a hundred and twenty-five. So you've got a hundred and twenty-four thousand left in there. So I don't disagree either way you go. But if that's going to help this, move this question along and get us to, to the answer on agreement that the money needs to be spent, let's spend it, get it referred to committee and have a discussion about what we want to do with that contingency or that settlement fund.
So move the mayor's motion. That's a great idea for now.
Alderman Garuso, just pause for a moment. We, we do have a motion on the floor. If the original maker of the motion wants to amend it or withdraw and resubmit, and I think that was Alderwoman Davis. Welcome to, if not, we have the motion on the floor to take this out of the Zomias fund right now.
I have no objections to taking it out of contingency and backfilling it once the discussion. The issue is already in finance. I don't think we need to re-refer it.
Okay, so Alderwoman Davis, you are amenable to amending your motion to authorize the mayor to use contingency funding. And Alderman Gillum, Gillum, I believe you seconded. Are you?
Is he not awake? Phil?
I can't hear you, Alderwoman Gillum. No, okay. Alderwoman Gillum is not.
I think, I guess Mike is dead because it's not red nor is it green, Mr. Chairman. I think he was going like that to the mic.
But the other alternative is Alderwoman Davis, you could withdraw your motion and put forth a new motion with the simple change of authorizing the mayor to take the money out of the contingency fund.
Okay, so move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. It's the exact same language with the alteration of have the, authorizing the mayor to spend money from the contingency fund toward this. Is there any further discussion or debate on the issue? Alderman Tori.
I just wanted to appreciate the mayor for helping us through this. Thank you.
I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, thank you to the mayor. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Merrill Lair. Any further discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. The next three items are Attorney Blumer's executive session, so she will move to the end of the meeting. That moves us on to reports to standing committees. We have none.
Point of order, what was that last vote that I never got to vote on?
The, Alderwoman Davis removed her motion, put forth a, a new motion, exact same language with the exception of authorizing the mayor to spend the money out of his contingency fund for this assessment. And that's what we voted on. So changing of the funding source from Zomias to contingency.
I think it's a rule, I think it's a rule. You guys shouldn't have voted until I came back on. There is a rule, Secretary of State rule. You shouldn't have voted until I came back on.
I mean, we'll, we'll.
I challenged the vote because I did not want to reconsider. I wanted the motion to stay as it was and vote for it.
Alderman Gillum, that, that's irrelevant. The maker of the motion withdrew the motion, which took that off. We're more than welcome to retake the vote.
The seconders got to agree to that, and I did not agree.
Attorney Blumer, does the secondor have to agree to remove a motion by the motion maker?
I, I don't know. I could spend a few minutes looking it up if you'd like.
Would you like to spend a few minutes looking it up? We can.
Okay.
What was the vote? What was the vote anyway? Because I don't know because I couldn't hear anything.
Alderwoman Davis removed the motion to remove her original motion, then put forth a new motion stating the exact same thing, with the exception of instead of utilizing the Zomias fund, it would be to utilize the mayor's contingency fund in the amount of not to exceed seven thousand dollars. And it was unanimous. Alderwoman Davis, go ahead.
So Alderman Gillum, it was the fact that the mayor, I don't know if you heard any of the mayor's discussion or if you were frozen at that time. But instead of sitting here all night and dividing the forces between Zomias and contingency, the mayor offered to take it to contingency until the board has this discussion in committee. And if they choose to use Zomias, we'll backfill that fund with Zomias fund.
Fine, no objection. I just, this is crazy. When, when an alderman gets bounced off, they should stop until the other one comes back on. Because we've had aldermen all night long being bounced off and they have to come back on. The meeting needs to stop until the other alderman comes back on. Those are the rules. Because we do that in the.
Your, your concern's been noted. We will reach out to the Secretary of State. I'm sure this has been taken up by other boards, and there, there must be some directive on what.
I, I watched on TV. I've seen it. They all waited until the alderman came back on. Or the select person.
Certainly. Well, we will get confirmation on that. I can certainly understand your objection and your concern. So the executive sessions, which are up next, they are moved to the end. We're on to reports of standing committees. There are none. Reports of select committees, there are none. Reports of representatives, there are none. Petition letters, miscellaneous communications, there are none. So we have a Board of Control Commissioners. We do have a first-class.
I'll move to go into the Board of Control Commissioners.
So second.
Motion seconded. All those in favor of hearing, reporting to the Control Commissioners, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
I'll move through the first-class liquor request for Medusa Lounge and authorize, authorize the clerk to sign on our behalf.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on the issue? Alderwoman Humphrey.
Thanks. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So this is a new business that is going into where the existing hideaway tavern or the previous hideaway tavern was, correct? And is, is this a, a business owner that's known to us or has had business in the city before? Or is this completely new? Is anybody able to answer that for me?
I'm unaware, Alderwoman Humphrey, if they have had a prior business within the city. There are some other licensing factors that I have to gather from these folks as well. So this here is just specific for the first-class request. As noted always, whenever we get into these things, if I come upon a problem or a question or a concern, I always would reach out, whether it would be to the Liquor Control Board or to the president of the board as far as that goes. So there are some avenues in regards if we needed to utilize those. But I have no idea who these folks are. You are correct in regards to the location. They still need to fill out a business license and to do a background check. So there is some more insight that I'm looking to get from them prior to sending this application on. The timing of it just worked out well for them. They got it to me on Thursday of last week for our board meeting. So that's the reason why I put it on the agenda for you folks.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion or debate on this first-class license? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'll move to go out of the Board of Control Commissioners.
Second.
Your motion's been, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, we're back out. We are on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business come before the board? Hearing and seeing none. On to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. I am hearing and seeing none. So this brings us to Attorney Blumer. You have a handful of executive sessions for us.
Yes, and I'd like to take them just a little bit out of order from what I had listed them on the agenda. I think if we first do the fire departments' union contract, then Chief Lovick can join us, and then he can drop off when we get to his, his contract next. And then we can do the hospital last. next, and then we can do the hospital last. I, again, as the parliamentarian, I should probably be the one that's giving you a definitive answer on this. But because we have three executive sessions, if the board would like, I think we could do all of the motions to go into executive session, and then take all action when we come back out, if the board would prefer. I think, given the format here with the teleconferencing, that that would be acceptable.
Sounds good, Matt.
Okay, so I'm going to give you, there's the three sets of motions to go into executive session, and then again, we'll have to come back into the public session after all of those at the very end. But the first one would be a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding negotiation of a labor relations agreement would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage, because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the agreement provisions to be negotiated.
So moves.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer?
Okay, then there's a, would be a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, fire chief, treasurer, and city attorney, to discuss the labor relations agreement as allowed under Title I, Section 313A1B.
So moves.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer?
Okay, this is for the second item. Motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of a contract would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage, because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the contract provisions to be negotiated.
So moves.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Yeah.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer?
A motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, treasurer, and city attorney, to discuss the negotiation of a contract as allowed under Title I, Section 313A1A.
So moves.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
And the third item is a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of a contract would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage, because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the contract provisions to be negotiated.
So moves.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
And a final motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, treasurer, and city attorney, to discuss the negotiation of a contract as allowed under Title I, Section 313A1A.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, I think I sent the executive session information to Mary, the mayor, and Bill, but just if anybody doesn't have it, let me know, and I can forward it along.
Hi, everyone good? Is anyone missing anything? Very good. We will head into executive session. You have a link. We'll start as soon as we're all in there.
All right, we are all here. So Attorney Blumer, if you could just start to give us the language, we'll go from there.
Sorry about that. I was muted. The first motion is to authorize the mayor to sign the collective bargaining agreement with IFF2323 on behalf of the city, and substantially the form presented.
So moves.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on this? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer?
Okay, and a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the employment agreement with William Lovett on behalf of the city, and substantially the form presented.
So moves.
Second.
Right, we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on the issue? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer?
And a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the limited occupational health services agreement with RRMC on behalf of the city, and substantially the form presented.
So moves.
Second.
Right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on the issue? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer, that's it, correct?
That's it, and I guess the mayor better have his blue pen ready tomorrow.
All right. Prior to adjournment, I'm going to recommend that we adjourn to a time certain for December 14th at 5:30 PM to take on the full budget. I'm assuming we should be complete with all of our budgetary meetings by then.
So moves.
Second.
All right. Any discussion or debate? Alderman Natori?
Yeah, I just want to let you know, I received the budget from Laz Parking. I reached them, and I received their budget over the weekend. I'm going to send that out to everybody for tomorrow's conversation. So just be expecting that in your email tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Natori. 5:30, 5:30 PM.
Thank you.
All right, so I have a motion, it's been seconded, to adjourn to December 14th at 5:30 PM to take up the full city budget. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, everyone. We stand adjourned.
All right.